enables organizations to use artificial intelligence at enterprise scale, solving previously unsolvable problems. C3 AI. This is Enterprise AI.
About 20 years ago, conservative political commentator David Brooks wrote about America's creative class of politically progressive knowledge workers in a book called Bobos in Paradise. He said this class, which some call the cultural elite, was basically open to anyone who wanted to join. Two decades later, Brooks says that thinking was naive, and he has recently revised some of those thoughts for The Atlantic. He joins me now to discuss. David, thanks for being here.
Good to be with you.
In the article, you reexamine this group of people that you wrote about back in 2000. You call it the creative class. First of all, I need you to sort of give us the idea of what a bobo is.
A bobo is a bourgeois bohemian, so those are people with 60s values and 90s money. So there were people like Steve Jobs who wanted to be a big corporate executive but wanted to wear black t-shirts. 20 years on, the people who made money by trading ideas, first of all, we all moved to big cities. Second, we concentrated power and married each other. Third, we invested huge amounts of money in our kids, so they came to dominate the competitive schools that produced us. And so before long, we had formed a sort of an elite Brahmin class that was driving the rest of the country crazy.
So throughout the piece, you talk about the bobos, but you use the pronoun "we." You include yourself in this group, and I'm probably a part of this group, too. I'm curious, was there a moment where you understood or decided that, you know what? I'm talking in the "we" form here?
It's pretty hard to ignore my parents or college professors. I went to the University of Chicago, grew up in suburban Philadelphia, New York City. I've been working for 20 years at The New York Times, so when you fit a stereotype as well as I do, you got to confess to it.
Now, one of the points you made 20 years ago was that theoretically, you could join this creative class if you had the right degree, if you had the right job, things like that. Is this not true anymore?
That's not true. You know, the top 60 schools, some of them have more people from the top 1% of earners than from the bottom 60%. And so we have not made the society more equal, we've made it more unequal. And not only is there a class division around education, there's this income division as we concentrate in the really affluent cities. And then there's sort of a status and social inequality. So people in the media, in the academy, in the big nonprofits, if you're not seen by us, you feel unseen by society. You feel like you're in flyover country, or you feel neglected. And hence, we have Trump. And if you tell people they're invisible, they're going to react really badly. And I should say, not just the US, in every Western country, this has happened.
It sounds like what you're telling me is that education plays a big role in perpetuating this sort of class structure that we have today, yeah?
Yeah. Basically, the SATs came into being in the 1950s, or their importance, because people at Harvard in the 1950s decided, we can't just be Ivy League schools for a bunch of blue-blood males. And so at first, going to GPAs and SATs, that was an attempt to democratize education, and it worked for a golden generation. And then it stopped working, then it just became a way to lock in your advantages as affluent families. It's just crazy, frankly, that we divide young people on the basis of how they do in high school tests and SAT scores between the ages of 15 and 25. It's just crazy that the skills that make you good at McKinsey Consulting are more valued than the skills that make you a good home health nurse. And so I would say the criteria of our meritocracy, nobody would devise that criteria now. We hopefully have a much broader view of what constitutes human excellence, but we settled on this narrow criteria, and now we're kind of stuck with it because the US News and World Report rankings.
David Brooks is a columnist for The New York Times and a contributing writer for The Atlantic. His latest piece for The Atlantic is called How the Bobos Broke America. David, thank you so much.
Oh, great to be with you.
We'll have more on the creative class tomorrow and just how this cultural elitism has been perpetuated. Mr. Brooks and I will discuss how we value work in this country and whether he thinks what we value in college education will ever change here in the United States. In Austin, I'm Andy Uller with The Marketplace Morning Report. From APM, American Public Media.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Your Consulting, providing CEOs of companies with 20 to 200 employees, a system designed to help run their organizations more efficiently. Your, E-U-R-E consulting.com.
The Roanoke City Council session for November the 1st, 2021, is hereby called to order, and I'll ask that Clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Beschich is absent. Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, in a quorum of presence. Thank you. Today, council meetings always will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursday at 7:00 PM and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. All right, items for action this morning. A communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda for this meeting. All right, is there a motion for the closed meeting?
I'm moved for the closed meeting.
Ma'am Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Ah, and the motion passes. There's a communication from the city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss and consider the acquisition of real property for public purposes. Where discussion is in an open meeting, would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
Ma'am Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Ah, and the motion passes. Thank you. Are there any items listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring any further discussion or clarification, or any additions or additions to the 2:00 PM agenda? There are no topics for discussion by the mayor and members of council, and so we'll go right on into our briefings. And at this time, I'm pleased to call on the city manager to introduce the briefing to us.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As most of you know, it is pretty customary that each year, we come before the council with some type of amendments to the zoning code. Most often, that is done for kind of housekeeping purposes, or for things that we have seen that have come up over the course of the year that really warrant some kind of adjustment to that code itself. This year is a little bit different in that, on the heels of the recent adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, there are amendments that the staff has put together to begin advancing on some of the implementation items that were identified in that plan. So it's a part of that process and is a part of our kind of outreach and raising awareness of what these proposals are. Today is a briefing, there's no action required. That action will come at a subsequent meeting, following the planning commission's public hearings and actually their recommendations. This is an opportunity for staff to share with you on three different topics, sort of what is proposed, why it's proposed, and to have some conversation regarding those. So that's the purpose of this. I think somewhere in this, Gillian will have some information about when the planning commission will see this, and also how folks can actually view the details that are a part of the ordinance as well. So that's what this item is for, and Gillian and team are going to do the presentation. So, Gillian, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Do you want to just do the rest? That was a great intro.
No. It's the extent of my knowledge.
Well, good morning. My name is Gillian Popamore. I'm the acting planning director for the city, as well as planning manager. I've got some folks with me today that, and I took my mask off, I'm a low talker, so I just want to make sure that you can hear me. I've got Philip Moore with me, our zoning administrator. He's been working tirelessly on the technical aspects of these text amendments. We've got Wayne Lefwitch here, our senior city planner extraordinaire, and then you all know Chris Chittum. We've also been working with the citizen engagement team, Lauren Waldron, on getting the word out on these text amendments. Joshua Johnson has been instrumental as well, and Tina Carr in our office all have had a hand in formulating what we have to brief you on today. And as Bob mentioned, what we're looking to do is really deliver on the policies that were set forth in the City Plan 2040. As you all know, it was roughly a two-to-three-year citizen engagement process that included a tremendous amount of citizen outreach, and within that plan, there were policies and action items within various themes that carried through the goals and desires of the community and how they were looking to grow as it relates to land development. So without further ado, I'm going to walk you through, as Bob mentioned, there are three main issues that we're looking to make some progress on as it relates to the Comprehensive Plan, and really carry through those policies into action through code amendments in the zoning ordinance. So just going through what those three key issues are. The first key issue is surrounding accessory apartments, and that's a defined term in our zoning code. You'll often hear the term ADU. That's a familiar acronym of planning jargon. Accessory dwelling unit is what the term stands for, accessory dwelling unit. But accessory apartment is something that we have in our zoning code at this time. But currently, it requires a special exception in order to permit that type of arrangement in our residential districts. And a special exception, for those of you who may not be as familiar, is something that requires a Board of Zoning Appeals action. And so it requires a public hearing, and as we've observed over many years administering the zoning code, it serves as a regulatory barrier for folks to be able to apply or go through the permitting process to create an accessory apartment on their property. And we'll go through that in more detail in just a moment. The other key issue that we're looking to address is to permit alternative energy solutions, and specifically in this category, we're looking to provide for explicit and permissive language surrounding solar energy systems. Those are going to be solar panels, as well as electric vehicle charging stations as accessory uses. And then finally, we're looking to eliminate our minimum parking requirement in all zoning districts, and we will talk about that in more depth. Just want to back up a slide, actually. I have a graphic here that sort of outlines how these policies that come from the City Plan 2040 fit together with an action within the plan, which then yields what we're going to bring before or propose to the planning commission and city council in the form of a code change to our zoning ordinance. So there's a broad policy, an action that has been identified within each area, or a number of actions that could begin to move that policy forward, and then finally, a code change. And those are what we are here to brief you on today, are those specified code changes. So on the first issue of code changes, the policy that supports, the Comprehensive Plan policy that supports the action of permitting accessory dwelling units by right in residential districts, most squarely falls under the interwoven equity theme. And the priority identified is neighborhood choice. And you can see the policy is enabling a range of housing types in all parts of the community, each neighborhood, and that is to provide opportunities to achieve a more inclusive, livable neighborhood and more sustainable growth over time. And you could see that the proposed action item, and this is straight from the City Plan 2040, is squarely permit accessory dwelling units in all residential districts. And again, this is a low-cost, low-risk, traditional form of development that has evolved in our most beloved historic neighborhoods. And again, what we are suggesting here is to remove one regulatory barrier, which is the special exception requirement in our residential zoning districts. I wanted to also bring to the council's attention that this amendment would only affect those properties that are single-family. So if you have a single-family dwelling as the principal use on the property, then this amendment would allow you to construct an accessory apartment. If you have a duplex, if you have a triplex, if there are those existing conditions in the neighborhood, this amendment would not enable further intensification. So I think that's an important, important point, to understand that this is a narrow, this is a narrow amendment that simply would enable that arrangement for single-family dwellings. The other safeguards or protections in place with regard to removing this regulatory barrier are supplemental regulations, and we have had supplemental regulations. And what supplemental regulations do is they respond to a specific use in the zoning code and deal with any potential negative impacts of that use through specific requirements. And we have those in place for accessory apartments, and those will remain in place for the accessory apartments. So for instance, you can see the first one ties the accessory apartment use to a single-family dwelling. So again, this could not be associated with a duplex, a triplex, it is exclusive to single-family dwellings. Secondly, you can only have one accessory apartment on one lot, so you cannot have multiple, and these are non-negotiable. This is not something you can get a waiver or variance from, it just is what it is. The other important thing to note with regard to the accessory apartments is there's a cap of 800 square feet on the use itself, so that keeps the unit small and the impact low to the neighborhoods, the effect on parking, the effect on any other impacts such as noise, overall neighborhood character, things that you might hear concerns about. Another supplemental regulation addresses that the utilities have to be, cannot be separately metered, and that is intended to keep a relationship in terms of sharing household duties such as sharing utility bills between the principal use, that single-family dwelling, and that detached accessory apartment. Another thing I would want to point out for the council is that an accessory apartment has to be detached and in a separate, in a separate building on the lot. It's at the rear of the property. It cannot be located in, say, a converted attic or a basement. That is something that we have seen evolve over time, but this amendment does not permit I can keep going, or if you wanted to ask questions at this time, or save questions for the end, up to you all.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do have a question about the separate meters.
Sure.
Like if it's a mother law speed, or your grandparents, or somebody like that, and they have their own expenses, and you want them to keep them separate, you would still have to have all of it together like it's my expense?
Well, you can make arrangements in terms of how you divide the expenses, of course, but in terms of having a separate utility meter from the utility company, say, water, electric, they would all have to be on the same meter.
So is that the zoning, or is that the utility company saying that they have to all be together?
It's zoning saying that they all have to be together. And again, the intent behind that regulation is to create some relationship between the principal use and the accessory, the other apartment. There's an implied sharing of household duties, talking about that utility bill. There's some oversight, it's less likely that you would have...
Rent it to strangers or something.
You kind of have to talk to somebody if you're going to share. I mean, it's just by custom or intention, I would say.
And I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that it has to be detached. Clearly, you're making a separation, but then you're saying it has to be together when it comes to the utilities. That, to me, I don't know, that just doesn't...
And so I would say the separately metered utilities is something that has been in our ordinance for, or our code, rather, for many, many years. It's something that we've sort of wondered how useful it is these days. We actually have people looking to, we'll get into it in the next topic, provide electric vehicle charging stations, and we found that that is something that you actually need to have a separate meter for. So, you know, it's something that has, in its time in the ordinance, created that necessary or implied relationship between the main house and the apartment on site, but, you know, it's...
Maybe time to be updated?
It might be, something to think about, and your feedback is welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moon?
On the same topic as Trish. So anyone who now has, let's say, an apartment over top of garage, and they are renting, does that same thing apply if they have a same meter, or are they able to have a separate meter if they're doing rental property, and they are living in the primary residence but renting over top of their garage?
Yeah, so in order to comply with this, they should be on the same meter.
Okay. But so they're not grandfathered in if that is happening now?
If they've got an existing condition that was established...
Right, that's what I mean, a special exception prior.
Through some legitimate means, through the utility company, then we tend to honor those as they're vested.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this accessory apartment could be a new build, or it could be a renovation of a building that's already at the rear of the property?
That's right, yes, that's right.
And I know there's been a lot of, kind of an ebb and flow to curiosity about tiny homes. Would that be an allowable use to build a tiny home in the back as an accessory apartment, as long as it was within the 800 square feet?
Yes, I think that's a good way to make that arrangement in an appropriate form for the existing neighborhood, a good way to infill a tiny home within the existing fabric of a traditional neighborhood setting. And I think you bring up an important point as well about reusing an existing detached structure. In some of our historic neighborhoods, there are wonderful examples of garages that are no longer useful for, they can't fit a modern motor vehicle, and this would, again, remove a barrier to be able to reuse that structure for a purpose that may provide a homeowner more flexibility with producing income, or making or providing housing for a family member.
So one other question, just to follow that.
Yes.
Depending on where this is done, so let's presume that if this is in an historic district, have we looked at what that new build or renovation would look like in historic districts as opposed to, or indifference to, nonhistoric districts?
That's a great question. As you know, I'm sure, in our historic districts, we have the Architectural Review Board, and we have our design guidelines that would apply, which would provide for generally a higher standard for design in terms of the materials used for an appropriate, appropriate new construction, if it were a new construction, if it were a renovation. The guidelines address appropriate adaptive reuse, whether there are character-defining doors that would need to be retained, or door openings that, say, for instance, if there are carriage-style doors, and so sort of the rhythm of those carriage-style doors maybe should be looked at by the Architectural Review Board to maintain the overall feel of that, that it was at one point in its life, a garage, rather. So there would, again, be that higher standard, of course, for historic districts in terms of design as it relates to material and scrutiny through a certificate of appropriateness. In other parts of the city, we don't have those in place for this use, other than the supplemental regulations.
And I guess one last question would be that as the process of evaluating and reviewing the historic district guidelines, I think that's happening, or may be happening.
Yes.
Just to make sure, then, that this, any change that we make here would correlate with any changes made, that they would align, I guess is what I'm saying.
I'm looking at Wayne Lefwitch to see if he wants to come up and address anything current or ongoing with the Architectural Re-Review Board. I would say that one thing that, should this amendment be successful, we would want to really put forth some easy promotional language about how to just go through this process if you're interested in doing it. And I think, to your point, incorporating how the design guidelines, either in their current, how they're currently written, fit into that... current, how they're currently written, fit into that story for those in the historic district. We have a wonderful residential pattern book that the planning staff had worked on a number of years ago, so I would envision being able to draw from that as well, even if you're not in a design-controlled neighborhood. But I'll let Wayne chime in.
Yeah, I think Gillian covered it well. I mean, quite frankly, there's not any disagreement between our guidelines and these accessory apartment supplemental regs and the policy we're suggesting today. As a matter of fact, some of the places we have the most accessory apartments existing would be our old southwest neighborhood, which is, of course, one of our local historic district neighborhoods. In fact, we recently had a development on the end of Woods Avenue, on the western end of Woods Avenue, that applied for, went through the special exception process. It was all new construction, or it is all new construction, to actually build single-family homes up front and accessory apartments in the back. And they were able to go through the special exception process, because that was required at that time, but then also go through and get a COA. So the Architectural Review Board looked at their design, their materials, and made sure it was appropriate for the historic district. So it worked quite well. As a matter of fact, historically, we've had a lot of these carriage apartments within our existing neighborhoods, so they actually fit very well within the guidelines.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Thank you.
Okay, I'll keep going. On the next slide, I've just prepared other policies and priorities where the accessory apartment amendment aligns with in furthering those policies. We mentioned interwoven equity and how the amendment furthers that, those policy of identifying and removing barriers to housing choice, as well as developing varied affordable housing options in each neighborhood. And finally, livable built environment, you can see that enabling affordable and accessible housing options in all neighborhoods is something that the planning staff heard in their engagement on the City Plan 2040. So if there are no other questions on accessory apartments, I'll move forward, and of course, we can have further discussion at the end, with our next key issue, which is furthers a priority within the harmony with nature, City Plan 2040 theme area, and the priority of clean energy and transportation. And the specified policy that the proposed code amendments related to enabling alternative energy solutions furthers an increase in coverage and maintenance of infrastructure for sustainable modes of transportation. And you can see that the specific action items that squarely align with these policies include increasing the number of electric vehicle charging stations through EV-ready building incentives, and find innovative ways to map their locations. And additionally, support technology strategies and businesses that improve access to more sustainable modes of transportation, such as ride solutions. So those are a couple of action items. And the proposed action that we are bringing forth through these zoning code amendments is to remove a regulatory barrier to enable alternative energy solutions. And the code change that's proposed is to create accessory uses to enable solar energy facilities and electric vehicle charging stations. So within our zoning code right now, we have a defined solar energy facility use. This creates a, it defines it as an accessory use and provides for supplemental regulations to ensure that these types of equipment are appropriately located on individual properties, that they have a relationship to some sort of principal use on the property, that's not just creating a, for instance, a solar energy farm. This is a discreet piece of equipment that would be best likened to some sort of AC equipment that would support a principal use. Additionally, we're getting more and more requests for electric vehicle charging stations. Tesla is just one that we're starting to find in our area, that private development want, developers are looking to retrofit existing parking lots to provide this type of equipment to cater to those who have electric vehicles. And so we find that this code change will make this type of technology more accessible by just making it very, much more user-friendly within our ordinance to just simply explicitly state that these technologies exist, they're permitted under these terms and conditions, and we welcome them if they comply with our very, you know, just appropriate sighting, scale, and location. The size of signage is something that we're looking to address, so that it's discreet Any questions on that topic? We do have these in our community already. It's just, again, we're looking to make our ordinance more explicit and user-friendly.
Just in general, who are the companies that are requesting charging stations?
Tesla is one. There's another operator that is non, Philip, do you know the name of that company?
I don't.
I don't know the other name off the top of my head. There are some that are specific to Tesla, and then some that cater to all types of, they're nonspecific to Tesla in general.
Okay. Mr. Jeff?
Regarding the charging stations, have you talked about the size of each charging station? And have you already determined that yet, the requirement, the code requirement regarding that, the size of each charging station?
Yes, in the supplemental regulations.
Hi there, I'm Philip Moore, zoning administrator for the city. Yes, in the supplemental regulations, we have addressed the maximum height and size of the units.
Is it the same, like a typical gas station, or is it smaller?
It's about the same, it's relatively the same size, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on to the last of the third issues that we're looking to address within the, for the code amendments. And that theme area within City Plan 2040 is harmony with nature, again, with proposing a code amendment to eliminate minimum parking. The priority is sustainable land development, and specifically, the policy is to reduce impervious surface through development requirements. And you can see that the action item proposed straight from the City Plan 2040 was suggesting to remove minimum parking requirements. So pretty simple alignment here from policy to priority action, and that is remove minimum parking requirement, and the proposed code change is to remove that minimum parking requirement. Again, the concern being the relationship to stormwater, environmental impacts, and what we are looking to do as a planning staff is to not be in a position where we, as a staff, are forcing someone to create parking that they simply do not want. And what we find ourselves, having been involved in site plan review for many, many years now, the real conversation surrounds maximum parking, and we are not discussing that as part of these amendments, but we will propose to address that at a later date. Any questions, concerns about that code change? Keep going? Okay. And again, more priorities, policies that support the elimination of our minimum parking So as Bob mentioned, the timeline for these proposed changes, you know, we are in the city council briefing right now. We are proposing to bring these before Planning Commission on November 8th at their public hearing, and then would propose to bring these before city council on November 15th. In terms of outreach, I recognize the staff that has worked tirelessly to get the word out and to prepare these text amendments. And we have taken an approach to the outreach to really boost our social media presence. The planning staff, in conjunction with RV TV, worked up a public service announcement. If you haven't seen it, we're incredibly proud of it. It does a tremendous job of quickly explaining what these three issues are in a very visually appealing way. And RV TV did a great job working with us on that. That has been shared broadly throughout social media platforms, thanks to the Office of Citizen Engagement. We held a virtual question and answer session on October 28th, just to provide any opportunities for members of the public or interested parties to ask planning staff technical or just policy questions about these proposed changes. We've deployed Civic Send notifications related to the briefings that we've held at the Planning Commission levels. And again, much of this has been appearing on social media, just to boost those various With that, that's all I have prepared. I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any concerns that any of you may have.
I don't see.
Yeah, I just have one question about the virtual question and answers that you did on October 28th.
Yes.
What kind of participation did you have, and how did you solicit that virtual question and answer session? Because a lot of us are struggling trying to get community input, and I'm just wondering what sort of participation you had, and how did you reach your targeted audience?
So in terms of participation, we had, we were hoping to get more questions. We only had, you know, one question or so. And we sort of, it was a template that we, or a format, rather, that we tried out for the purposes of rolling out these text amendments in a pandemic era. So we were hoping for more participation. The Office of Citizen Engagement deployed the notices to maximize the amount of views on social media. And so the word was certainly out there through the city's Facebook page, the Instagram, Facebook stories, and Lauren, if you know off the top of your head how many views that particular post had, that might be helpful if you want to-
Yes, absolutely.
To Gillian's point, we received over 200 as far as impressions of the post. So with this virtual Q and A on October 28th, we facilitated this as a Facebook livestream, which then, of course, was captured as a recording on the city's Facebook page. At that point, leading into that virtual Q and A, to Gillian's point again, we promoted that virtual Q and A across the city's social media pages, on our stories as well, and then in addition, we sent out a news release. And during that virtual Q and A livestream, we probably had over 20 or around 20 as far as the actual views of the livestream, which is very similar to the amount of engagement that we receive on a general basis, as far as our city meetings as well, so I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that answered my question, but I didn't understand. How many participants did you say you had?
Around 20 as far as the views of the livestream.
Not the views, but the question and answers. How many participants did you receive for the question and answer session?
We had about one question come through.
So you had one question?
Yes, yes.
So, which is, aside from this, I'm still trying to figure out what we can do as a city with a lot of different boards, and trying to figure out what we need to do for our community engagement. We seem to be suffering in that area, which is not relevant to what we're doing today, but I'm just wondering what we can do to get more community involvement, because this is very important, and we would love, and I think citizens want to be involved and informed, but I don't know that we're reaching them, because not everybody is on social media. So we've got a, that's another little project we need to work on, because one person, I mean, I just had a public hearing recently on the equity and empowerment, and we didn't have any participation, and they did the exact same thing. So maybe these are not working, is what I'm saying. We need to come up with some other ideas later on. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, of course, as Lauren has mentioned, you know, we don't obviously rely just on social media. Social media was the platform that we used for the Q and A. Notification of the Q and A, though, was made available through our media contacts and media releases, as well as the other social media. Josh, of course, reached out to all the neighborhood associations to make them aware also of this information. You know, that, as you know, from other hearings we've had, we can make the information available, and the invitation can be extended. We can't force people, obviously, to be a participant in these activities as we go through, and-
No, we just want to make sure we're reaching them.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that it's understood that we, you know, we may use the social media platform for the event itself, much like we're doing here. I mean, we're having this public hearing, but we're also relying on people watching it online, as well as later on RV TV. But that doesn't mean that's the only way in which we alert people to the presence of that opportunity, that we do that across all of our channels, print media, radio, TV, any of those lists that we maintain, all of those go out, so that they're aware of that activity that's going on. I just, the social media is the tool that we use at the end to actually host the event, but not actually the only way in which we alert people.
So print media, what are we using for print media?
Those are the news releases.
All of them? Like the news releases, are they going in the Tribune, the Rowneup Times?
That is up to them if they pick up the story. Those are not ads.
So they're not, they're just press releases?
Right, those are us alerting the media to the fact that they're, and I think there were stories that actually ran on these in the media as well. So that piece is really out of our hands, at the point at which we make them aware of what is happening, as to whether they cover the event or not.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong, I'm just saying we may be need, you know, perhaps we need to do something different. I just can't figure it out, and it's nobody's, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, I'm just saying that I know we're not reaching them.
And we continue to look for, you know, ways to continue to expand that reach. You know, in some instances, for example, when we do the, we did the CARES Act funding for something like that, we're actually making funding available. We've actually bought ads in the Rowneup Times, as well as the Tribune, to make folks aware of those. I can tell you that even in those instances, that has not increased participation.
Nothing has happened. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
And just to add to what Bob said, we have, of course, Planning Commission, public hearing, we've also had briefings before Planning Commission, where we've deployed the traditional means of outreach through the legal ad and Rowneup Times and other forms of public notification. Those who are engaged from an email, signed up for the email Civic Send for work, or topics going before the Planning Commission, they would receive those notifications and see that the text amendments have been a subject of discussion before Planning Commission in several, several instances, and again on November 8th. And I do know that the- And I do know that the Roanoke Times is working on a story regarding these.
And if I may, Mayor, I just wanted to also thank Gillian and her staff for working on these. This is actually one of those rare instances where you can actually follow something through from a multi-year, actually, community engagement, which resulted in the crafting of the comprehensive plan, which, of course, went through all of these processes and got adopted ultimately by you all, and then see it actually come to full fruition with then going down into the action items and bringing that forward. So, certainly want to thank them for their work on this. And there's still work left to be done before it comes in front of you all for the final decision. But again, this is one of those opportunities we get to kind of highlight how policies actually create it. We don't often get to do that in such a pure fashion and stuff. So, certainly want to thank them for that work as well. And thank you all for the questions, because I think that'll help them kind of refine this as we go forward.
All right.
Thank you so much. Any other concerns?
Thank you for a good report. Let me say something about community engagement. I've been sitting on this dais, on a dais of the school board for almost 20 years. If somebody can write a book on community engagement, I think they have a million-dollar seller right off the bat. It's a challenge for every level of government to get community engaged. You can carry it out, it's almost as though you have to have a meeting every day in every neighborhood and you still wouldn't get the information. People just don't know it. So, it's a challenge for us. We're going to keep looking, working, and maybe one day, Council McCaw will do that book he's going to do and talk about community engagement. Because oftentimes, people, they're just not informed. We could get there and I can tell you from a number of different issues, there just doesn't, it's not, if it doesn't affect me, I'm not interested in it. And so, that's a challenge we have, and not only council, and not only this council, all across the country. Community engagement, it's a tough chapter. And also, I want to thank you all for your work that you did, regardless of the outcome on the Brandon project. You did a lot of work there, a lot of commitment, and you committed a lot of things. So, I want to thank you for that effort. We appreciate it. As mayor, I appreciate that. All right? Thank you. All right, we'll receive and file that as a briefing, and we will now stand in recess for a closed meeting. And thereafter, we'll reconvene today at 2:00 here in the council chamber. So, we're now in recess. Thank you.